Thank you.
Okay, we are under the.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna start all over like it was supposed to be at 5:30. Again, I called this meeting to the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order, and I will ask the clerk if she will to call roll.
I'll take roll if you'd like. Alan Patterson?
Here.
Yehima Curriton?
Here.
Judy Anna Tinklinberg?
Here.
Sheila Henson?
Here.
James Barnett?
Here.
Ben Levine? And Chairman Deese, Charles Deese. All right, we have.
The clerk, note for the record that according to the Lancaster County Planning Commission, as present, the meeting will continue as ordered.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for being here. It's a short time meeting, but a long time getting started, so. But we'll make it, believe me. Thank you for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, and ladies commissioners, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the agenda. Have a motion to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Mr. Hardin? We have a request to defer that was received in writing from, for item B. Did you want to vote on amending the agenda to defer that, or do you want to wait till?
The item.
The item.
Let's wait till the item.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the agenda for Mr. Barnett, a second for Ms. Henson. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Now comes time for citizens' comments, and no one has signed to speak, so we will pass that by. If we can get to the party, I'll move it. Next item on the agenda is the minutes for the special meeting that was held on December the 14th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve? Chairman, I move for approval.
I second it.
Mr. Barnett, a second from Ms. Tinklinberg. And I will accuse myself because I did not make that meeting. Those in favor of the minutes, please show your voting sign.
So it was just the three who attended.
Four.
Patterson, did you?
They attended.
Motion passes. A vote of?
Four.
Four to zero, two abstain. Regular minutes for the December 19, 2023 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion for Ms. Curriton?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barnett. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. The next, excuse me, the workshop minutes for January 4, 2024. Mr. Patterson will abstain. Do I hear a motion?
I will abstain, too. It was, it's in there that I was here, but I was not.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Curriton?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barnett. All in favor? Motion passes by a vote of four to zero, two abstentions. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public items, starting with subdivision 2023-0161, Edgewater Phase 11. Ms. Hardin?
Yes, sir. This is an application for preliminary plat for 47 acres, or just over 47 acres, in the Edgewater area, Phase 11. As you can see on the overview map, the general location of Edgewater Phase 11 is shown. This is, the owner, True Homes, has applied for the preliminary plat to construct 104 single-family lots and 49-town homes. The zoning for this is Plan Development District Number Two, or Edgewater. Matt has done a great job of going out and showing pictures of where we posted the signs and some location photos in that vicinity. As you can tell, the roads and the curved gutter and the street trees are in in these areas. The proposed plan is shown on the screen, as was in your staff report. To give you a little bit of background, the development summary was, again, 47, just over 47 acres. There's 22 acres of open space proposed, which is 46.72% of the area shown within the plat. The streets are to be privately maintained. As far as staff comments, the, there are no outstanding staff comments, and I don't mean like fantastic, I mean ones left to be said. The applicant has gone through and addressed all comments. Lancaster Water and Sewer Pump Station proposed within this section will also serve subsequent phases, as well as the area formerly known as Bridlewood, now known as the Pinery. I discussed the timeframe on this with the Lancaster Water and Sewer representatives, and they were very positive that this is moving along and, in a way, to have this done as soon as possible. The school board even approved the request, so with nothing else for us to review, staff has recommended approval of this preliminary subdivision plat request.
Any questions for staff? Or none? Then does?
The applicant's in the room, if you'd like to ask any questions.
Just fixing to get back.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun.
Does the applicant have anything they would like to offer this time? Thank you. At this time, I'll call this public hearing on SD 2023-0161, Edgewater Phase 11. No one has signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you SD 2023-0161, Edgewater Phase 11. Do I hear a motion? Chairman, I move for approval. Have a motion?
I second it.
From Mr. Barnett? A second from Ms. Henson, discussion. Mr. Patterson?
I just.
I seen you getting ready.
I just, just wanted to say since the applicant's in the, in the room, that I certainly appreciate the applicant addressing the TRC comments in a timely manner.
I agree, thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alan Patterson?
Four.
Yehima Curriton?
Four.
Judy Anna Tinklinberg?
Four.
Sheila Henson?
Or.
James Barnett?
Or.
Chairman Deese?
Or.
Motion passed by a vote of six to zero, and. Okay. The next item is Resolution SD 2023-1136, the Ashbury Site, and the applicant has requested a deferral. So do I hear a motion to defer?
Make a motion that we defer this to our next scheduled meeting?
Patterson?
I'll second. Sorry. I just had a quick question. Would the folks that came to speak on that be able to speak tonight?
Don't have a public hearing tonight.
If it's deferred, they would, the public hearing wouldn't be held tonight, it would be held at the next meeting.
The second was by.
I second.
Mr. Barnett? Motion has been made in second to defer SD 2023-1136, the Ashbury Site, until our next regular meeting in February.
Are we discussing?
No, discussions have passed. We had that opportunity.
What, I think the, what, discussion's fine. I mean, it's not fine, we're good with that, but we were just thinking about the people that had come to speak.
Right.
They drove a long way to talk.
Could they not speak and before, I mean, you know, just to, and then, then that would be omitted at the next meeting? I'm just asking.
Well.
We were just thinking about the people.
Already deferred.
What you could do is reopen, after this vote, is reopen public comment and allow them to be part of just public comment, and we would be able to carry those comments forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for the options.
But that's an option. It doesn't have, it's, it's totally up to the, the will of the board.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to defer until the February meeting and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Alan Patterson?
Four.
Yehima Curriton?
Four.
Judy Anna Tinklinberg?
Four.
Sheila Henson?
Or.
James Barnett?
Or.
Chairman Deese?
Or.
Motion to defer until February meeting is passed by a vote of six to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open up the public.
Just a moment, please. If you'll give me one minute, I will get to that very item. I'm just trying to get mine.
I just didn't want the opportunity to pass.
Pardon me? I'm not gonna let the opportunity pass, Ms. Curriton, I assure you of that. It's a little bit unorthodox. How many people here? I have three, two, excuse me, there's two people that signed to speak. I'm going to allow this to go forward, but in order to get it into the minutes, that's the only reason it's happening. And then you won't have to come back for the next meeting unless you want to. All right, we're going to consider this not public hearing, but citizen comments, because the public hearing has already been passed. Josh Brown?
I apologize, sir. You do need a formal motion to reopen citizens' comments and to get back into that phase.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. And, Ms. Curriton, did you?
Do I need a?
You need a second for that.
Do I need a formal motion? Yes. I got a motion and a second. All in favor to reopen?
Who is my second? Who is the second?
Ms. Tinklinberg was.
All right, the motion is unanimous. In fact, we're gonna use this as the public hearing, and then we won't have a public hearing in February. Is that against the rule now?
My understanding is that we voted to defer the hearing.
That's right.
This is.
That's fine.
And I will include their comments.
We're going to allow them to speak.
Yes, sir.
As citizens' comments, which is a little bit unusual since that is passed, but we will allow it. Josh Brown, you will have up to three minutes, once you give your name and address for the record.
Josh Brown, 9192 Possum Hollow Road in Indianland.
Right.
Thank you, I've not done this before. I've been in Indianland for nearly 20 years. I'm not here to say that progress, like we're seeing with the Ashbury location there near Old Bales and Possum Hollow, I know that we can't always stop progress, but, you know, our county has had a lot of tradition in terms of, you know, families that grow and, and use the land. And surrounding me are amazing people that have a tradition of raising cattle, that have chickens, that every year we plant corn and we plant beans and we work the land. And, you know, we'll never be able to be so many of us that try to keep these traditions to stand up against, you know, 300 families that end up living, you know, in 90 acres and things of that nature. But as these people come in, who's to say another three years, four years, five years from now, there's not all those people in here telling us that we can't grow our corn, have our beans, have our chickens, have our cattle, and, and raise our children to run? And I, like I said, I know I can't say, "Don't come to our wonderful place that we, where we have," because that's why people want to be here, but then it's gonna change, and then they're gonna tell me that I can't do that with my children, or my children can't do that again someday. So I would ask that as, as you're approving these things, to consider us that have been here, for those that have been here so much longer than me, the Cooks that have been here for, you know, so many generations, and the Whitesides, and, and all those people that live up and down those areas, and are just trying to continue those family traditions, and allow us to continue to have our chickens and our cattle and our corn and our beans and just very simple lifestyles. And that's all I came to say, is just continue thinking about our traditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Debbie Boselman. Think I pronounced that right?
I'm not sure this is the roads, the intersections and stuff that I came to talk about.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Debbie Boselman?
Allow up to three minutes.
2035 Donaldson Street, Indianland, Bridge Mills subdivision. I've lived here since 2017, and I've seen a lot of rapid growth. There are several developments that have been built during this time, from apartments and homes and more, and I'm not opposed to that growth, but I do think that it should be smart and planned growth. There's three areas I'd like to address very quickly today. Traffic, I think that the roads that, that I came to address was Old Bales, where this development is gonna be, and Possum Hollow. That road, Old Bales, where this development is going to be, entrance and, and exiting to, I don't think can support that by itself, and I do agree with Mr. Patterson, I believe, said in last month's meeting, that if that road that they have planned to, Possum Hollow is not built when the development is built, it won't be built. My concern about the Old Bales road is that it cannot accommodate the emergency, the first responders, with the way that it is developed today. I'm concerned about how, if we approve it, the area directly and indirectly, the growth that is planned cannot support that. The second issue I have is with schools. Multiple schools have been built in the five-plus years that I've been here, and I'm already hearing parents complaining about the size of the classes and the fact that these schools are either overcrowded or they're about to hit capacity. So I think that that's kind of disappointing, and I'm wondering where these kids in this new development will go to school. The third thing I have is the infrastructure. I don't know if the current infrastructure, water, sewer, all the utilities can support that now, if they come in with the addition of Ashbury. I trust that the board is making good decisions with this, but I'm also concerned about the runoff. I see them reshaping the land in a lot of these communities, so please consider that. I ask that you vote no tonight for Ashbury. I know that this is public comments, and I do expect that growth will happen in this area, but I do hope that we're not putting the cart before the horse. I have one last comment, and I've been to these meetings over the course of time that I've been here, whether it's the planning or the county council meeting, and it really disappoints me when I hear any of you say that you haven't been in an area that you're voting on, and you vote against the people that do live in that area and work in that area that sit on this board. So I'd like to invite you to come up to the panhandle, if you haven't been up there in a while, and I'll be glad to take you on a tour. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's all that has signed to speak, so we will continue on from there. Thank you, folks. And thank the commissioners for their concern to allow me to move forward by breaking some rules.
Mr. Chairman, may I be?
You may.
In the interest of fairness, I believe that the applicant is still in the room, and in order to have equal time, if he would, even though he didn't sign up, if he has a few minutes and would like to speak now, it would be a good time, or you can save your comments for the next meeting, just so that you know you have the ability to speak as well. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. I was assured that that was what was happening. Right. That being said. Thank you. New business, an overview for next month's agenda?
We have two, in addition to the item that has been deferred, we will have two other preliminary plats. I think both of them are Colston Enterprises plats that are returning. I think of the Sands and Little Dude. Yeah, Sands and Little Dude are both coming back, and I think we also have a rezoning that's been submitted, so.
Right? Any comments concerning those? Hearing none, we'll move on. Does anything else, Ms. Hardin?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As I voiced in the past, I sometimes get tired of hearing of Indianland, and I don't mean that negative way. Indianland happened. It's already built, it's already crowded, there was no thoughts. Tonight, we had another addition to Edgewater come forward, and yet somebody invited me to come to Indianland and see it. Well, I've been there, but nobody has seen Edgewater. When I spoke about the public, Edgewater is gonna be worse than Indianland ever thought about, and it hadn't even been considered. We have a cow path going into 6,000 homes. You think you got a problem in Indianland, come to Edgewater. Personally, I live there, and at quarter to six in the morning, I have to wait to get a pull out of my route. I sit getting ready to go to church during Christmas at 6 o'clock at night and counted 15 cars passing back and forth, and there's only less than 1,000 people living down there now. It's not even 20% of what's gonna be there. So I'm gonna bring that up at the joint meeting. Somebody besides this commission needs to be talking to the state. We, we need help there so we don't become another Indianland.
Mr. Barnett?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
In, in light of Mr. Barnett's comments, and I'm, I'm not 100% sure how, how to verbalize this or to do it, but I would like Ms. Harden's advice. In light of Mr. Levine's resignation, and he was our planning commission representative on the comp plan, I think that it's very important that the planning commission have representation on that comprehensive plan task force. So tonight, I would like to make a motion. No, no, wait a minute, I'm.
I think Mr. Patterson, my Mr. Levine is planning to be here.
No, I'm talking about, but he, it's my understanding, he resigned from the planning commission, and in order to sit on that board, he needs to be a member of the planning commission?
Not necessarily.
Oh?
No.
So he's.
He can continue to be the planning commission representative if you wish him to.
Does he report back?
There will only be one more stakeholder meeting.
Right.
So it's up to y'all.
So, and, and so in light of that, I don't know that we have a reporting structure so that Ben will come and report to us on the status or the state of the comp plan. What I was gonna suggest is that I wanted to nominate Ms. Tinklinberger to sit on the comp plan board as our representative so that she could report back to us in our normal meetings.
Okay.
And I don't know procedurally, I mean, I just thinking, we, we, we need planning commission representation on that, in that group.
I agree, and, but.
We have to know exactly what.
Have a motion. Have a motion, and I, I can't put two out there representing the planning commission, they asked for one, and it's my understanding from Mr. Levine himself that he's planning to be here for the meeting, and to continue on as our representative on the comp plan committee. Now.
Chairman, can we ask specifically, is it possible for two people to be on that committee?
The structure of the committee only calls for one, but because of this unique situation, Allison and I were just discussing this, we could elect an alternate so that if there's a reason he can't attend, she can attend the last meeting and report back to us if, for some reason, he couldn't come to report back to us. He has told us that he's attending those meetings and he's gonna report back, but if you're concerned about it, you can elect an alternate. That's a, a compromise.
Is a stakeholder meeting, is that the last of, that this board?
In February, that's gonna be the last stakeholder meeting, yeah.
But that, and so is that the last of the comp plan?
Yes.
Group meetings?
Yes.
Several hours on February the 15th, which is a special.
We're gonna be approving this thing.
They're gonna meet on the, stakeholders are gonna meet on the 8th, so you would have a report at your meeting in February on the 15th for the comp plan, and then, then you're gonna make a referral to council.
We will actually vote on the comp plan on February the 15th.
Unless there's no consensus on a vote.
Unless, like you said, something unusual comes up.
Is the meeting on the 15th or on the 20th?
The, the special meeting for the comp plan, so we don't have to deal with the rest of the agenda, so we're meeting on the 15th, Thursday, the 15th.
Thank you.
But the stakeholders will meet on the 8th.
Now, Mr. Patterson, you have a motion on the floor, would you like to rephrase the motion? Or do you want to continue it as is? We're not gonna have two on the committee, though.
We, we can have two attend if one is designated as an alternate.
Yes, and the alternate was said quietly.
Honestly, it's a public meeting, everybody can attend.
Right, that's right, right.
Then I shouldn't go, because I won't be able to do that.
Well, yeah.
Is that true? Can you please say that again? Where everybody can hear you.
The alternate, the alternate stands up and speaks if the actual member is not there.
He said I would not be allowed to give comments.
You won't be able to speak and give comments if the one representing the planning commission is already there.
I'd like some clarity, because I think I'm, I'm hearing it's a public meeting, anybody can speak, but you can't speak in behalf of this commission.
That's exactly.
So you can attend and speak, everybody here can, but you can't say that you're representing this commission, period. That's why we need a lawyer here sometimes.
That's true.
The document, the form of the committee?
Right. Mr. Patterson, you're on the floor.
In light of that, the fact that there's only one more meeting left, and Mr. Levine will be reporting back to, to this group?
I will request that.
And that would be an expectation. I withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn, and, and we will be in touch with Mr. Levine. His, his last statement to me was that he would be in the stakeholder meetings, he would not let that go, so, even though he couldn't be in all the planning commission meetings. But I will be in touch with him after this meeting tonight.
And I'll remind everybody that tonight's meeting, everybody sits at the table equally, and any ideas that come up, we're gonna be documenting, writing down, and taking back to see how it matches with the statements and included in the comp plan.
Is it, can, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman? I, I just find it hard to digest that Mr. Levine would still serve as a representative of this board and not be required to come back and report to this board.
He is being required to come back and report to this board.
I apologize, I heard that it was a suggestion, that it was an ask versus a expect.
If there is any reason he can't come in person, he will present a written report.
We will move forward. Anything else, Ms. Harden?
No, sir.
Anything else from the staff?
I'm.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Do it adjourn.
Wait a minute. I just had a quick question, because I don't have February 15th meeting on my calendar.
Right. That's a good point. You mentioned other meetings that we aren't, we don't know about.
Okay, I sent, I sent an email with the, the list of meetings for the comp plan, and it had the public meetings that are held, and it also had the February 8th stakeholder and the February 15th special meeting for us. So if anyone didn't get that, I'll send it out again in the morning.
Send it out.
And that had the public notice about the three meetings. It would have had the attachment that talked about the three regional meetings that we've been pushing out on social media as well.
Got those January...
January 23rd, 29th, and 30th.
Yep, got those.
I've got the community advisory committee in the Kershaw.
Mm-hmm.
I've got that on the 15th.
There's more than one? No, that's Kershaw's community advisory.
23rd, 29th, and 30th.
Right, that was the first email I sent, and I sent a second email that had, that was generated by, it had a link to the website generated by the consultant, that had those meetings plus the stake, I can, I mean, I'll send it again in the morning if it wasn't received.
I didn't receive that email.
Okay, send it again.
I don't see it in my inbox either.
You've got one on there for the 15th, you...
I haven't gotten the one 15th, but it's in Kershaw.
That's the Kershaw meeting, yeah, that's not ours, that's not our comprehensive plan, that's not...
That's not our meeting.
Kershaw's is not on the 15th, is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
So what is Kershaw's?
I don't know.
Kershaw's is on the 23rd, if I remember correctly.
23rd, 23rd on...
There's been a special meeting called for February the 15th in this chamber...
Okay.
...for the final discussion and vote on the comprehensive plan for 2024 through 2040.
And for the interest of public, making sure we get this out in the public yet again about the dates, the 23rd, the comprehensive plan meeting will be held in Kershaw, at the Kershaw branch of the Lancaster County Library, which is 3855 Fork Hill Road. Then the following...
The new library.
The new library, my bad.
Is it the new library or the...
It's the new library.
That's on Main Street, Hampton Street.
Okay, Main Street and Hampton Street, thank you very much, I had the wrong address in my emails, not from the list, but from my... Then on the 29th, which is a Monday, at 6:00 p.m., comp plan meeting here in Lancaster at the historic courthouse across the street from this building. And then on Tuesday, the 30th, at the Dell Webb Library, 7641 Charlotte Highway, Fort Mill, the comprehensive plan meeting in Indianland. Those are the last three public meetings, and then anything collected from those three meetings will go together through the stakeholders and then through you at the special meetings before it goes to public hearing.
Would you send those dates out tomorrow?
Yes, I'm going to send it all out again tomorrow morning.
Let me make sure I've got all that. I thought I did, but I obviously didn't.
I'll send it out again.
So we'll receive another copy to review before the vote on the 15th?
I don't believe that you will until the time that you come for the vote, vote, because we will have four opportunities for changes, so you will probably receive a copy of the changes to the public draft rather than receive a full copy.
Okay, we'll have that.
But you will have a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And I will personally make sure that happens, because I need it too.
I have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
I second it.
I have a second, all in favor. Unanimous, thank you. Please, everyone, get these stuff, we're going to move down. If your names are not on the table, they're on that table over there, please pick it up. Move it over here.
It is definitely informal seating, you don't have to sit together as a board, you can sit among...